Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's five o'clock on Thursday, February the sixth. And this is budget meeting number three for the Township of Edersburg Cardinal Administration and Finance Committee meeting in the whole. Uh, with our volunteer members and uh, Mr. Robertson sends his regrets from sunny Mexico. And uh, so item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And there is going to be a slight amendment to the agenda. We're going to add item number five F. So that we don't forget it. Item number five F is the set the date of the next budget meeting. And so I'm looking for the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Does anybody have that motion or am I looking for a verbal?
Verbal.
Verbal. I need a mover and a seconder then somewhere. Okay, I have Counselor Cameron and seconded by Counselor Dillabong. To approve the agenda as amended. Now, those in favor? Motion is carried. And so now I'm at item number three, which is discussion disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this afternoon? Hearing none, I'm about to move on. Next is minutes of business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. And uh, the minutes were circulated with the agenda package. Does anyone have anything to bring forward from those minutes? So hearing none.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think on page four twenty-five says these minutes were approved in twenty-four day of February twenty-twenty.
Think that probably should be January?
No.
Well, I mean, it hasn't occurred, so it's where approved, or will be approved, or what?
No, okay, so now I got a bunch of people looking at me. I don't know why they're looking at me. Uh, one thing I know for sure is this is the fifth of January.
No, it's the sixth.
The sixth of January.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I was at the meeting on January twenty-seventh. Uh, we did not get those approved at council because the meeting was the same day, council meeting. So the next opportunity for council to approve the minutes is at their February twenty-fourth meeting. So these minutes, we're not asking the committee to approve. We're just bringing them forward for reference so you can remember what we did on January twenty-seventh.
Now, that terrifies everything.
Thank you.
Everybody understand what we've just been told?
Yes.
Okay, so now, are, is there any, are, is there any business arising from those minutes? None, I don't see anything. Alright, so now, we're at item number five on the agenda. And uh, so basically, the first couple of items on the agenda is to just review where we left off at our last budget meeting. And so the first uh, item number five A is reviewing uh, our draft capital budget as per budget meeting number two. And I think that that's what we have on the screen and the CIO is gonna talk to that. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, Mr. Mayor, and I will, I will defer to the Treasurer to just uh, re- review the uh, the revisions that were completed at budget meeting number two.
Okay, so we have the sheet in front of us, uh, and it's labeled six of twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay, so go ahead, um.
So at our last budget meeting, we, uh, the council committee had made a recommendation to change the transfer from reserves in fire department for an additional hundred thousand. So, uh, as you can see on the sheet, we have amended the transfer of reserves uh, so that we have a, a different value for taxation of a hundred and seventy-four instead of the two seventy-four.
Uh, just a minute now, where am I here?
In, under the fire department.
Yes.
We originally, uh, the draft budget only had seventy thousand coming out of reserves and.
Transfer from?
Correct.
Now we're transferring from a hundred and seventy?
Correct, as per committee's recommendation.
And leaving a hundred and seventy-four for taxation.
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Then in, in recreation, we have, uh, we have actually deferred two air, two de, two projects. The uh, pool filters filtration system and the dehumidifier have been taken out of the uh, of the capital. Uh, in the information item, the seventy thousand dollar uh, filtration repair was removed, but a transfer into the uh, uh, recreation reserve of thirty thousand was, uh, was recommended by committee.
And where does that show?
It isn't showing on this particular sheet because this is only funding analysis for capital projects. All it's showing is that we've removed the ze, the humidifier is now zero in the, in the capital. Scrolling down a little further, we're in public works. There were two deferrals in the equipment. The brush head as well as the uh, the electronic signboards, uh, for a total of eighty-nine thousand that came out. And committees recommended that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars be taken out of reserves to, uh, to purchase some of the, uh, equipment. Um, because of that value, I put the whole amount against the pot truck, just for simplicity.
So transferring from the reserves a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
And leaving a hundred and twenty to come from?
Taxation.
Taxation, okay.
Then further down, the only other change that we made, that the committee recommended changing was the engineering survey costs for Rooney, Jordan, and Cedar Grove. Initially, the budget had four, four hundred thousand and we reduced that number to two hundred thousand.
And so that means that the amount that is required from taxation as of this point in time is one point two eight eight decimal, or comma eight seven five.
One point two eight six eight seven five.
Okay, it's one, I can't see it.
Throw up my magnifying glass, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's it, that's it, that's it, that's it.
Is that six six, one point two six six?
One point two eight six eight seven five.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so there we are, and, and if you go to the far right, the amounts that have come out are seventy, fifteen, fifty, thirty-nine, and two hundred, for a total coming out of three seventy-four. Alright, so now we're at needing to raise one point one million, two eighty-six, eight seventy-five from taxation. And that represents a ninety-three thousand dollar increase over what we spent on capital last year. So, now, my understanding is that having completed that review, the next item is five B, where we look at the effect of tax rate changes on various residential bills. Is that correct? So, we had asked the staff to do an analysis for us of some of the tax rate changes. And on item five B, the next sheet or the next item, you see that a one percent increase in the tax levy is equal to fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Currently, the tax revenue will need to raise, will need to increase by two hundred and fifty-six, eight forty-nine, or four hundred and forty, four point four seven percent. That's currently where we sit at the present time. It was noted that counties is reducing the tax rate by point three percent, and the provinces reduced the education tax rate for residential properties by four point nine seven percent. Staff is pointing out that the township could increase our current township tax rate by one point four one percent. And basically, the taxpayer would see that as neutral. Now, if the township increases our tax rate by two point eight one percent, it would return the overall tax rate to, well, that's sort of just a comparator. See the tax report comparing the tax revenue from twenty nineteen growth and phase in. So I wanted to have that brought forward. So just the essence of it is that if you look on the next page, township in two twenty, twenty twenty, is gonna receive twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight additional dollars due to the growth of assessment in our township. And it's going to receive a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars more due to phase in, year four of assessment, phase in of assessment values. So, between growth and phase in, our revenue will go up by one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Wanted everybody to have that clear in their minds. You can see that there's quite a difference between the growth in twenty twenty, which is considerably less than the growth in twenty nineteen, because in twenty nineteen, we saw the full year effect of the giant tiger assessment. So.
Any other questions?
Yes, go ahead.
The growth-related tax revenue, uh, what is that? How's that determined?
Okay, so, uh, in their analysis, that, that IMPACT provides to the Treasurer, the, the IMPACT report shows new growth. In other words, this is new buildings that came on stream during twenty twenty. And IMPACT identifies that assessment as separate from phase-in assessment. And so what the Treasurer does is applies the tax rate, last year's tax rate, to that assessment growth.
So is that one month then?
No, one year.
Well, they don't know what's gonna be built in twenty.
No, no, no. That's the growth in twenty twenty because of.
Of what was built in nineteen?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Now, and that growth is never totally complete because there's always a month or so lag. So we will get some supplementary in twenty twenty over and above that as other properties which were, which came on stream late in twenty nineteen attract assessment in twenty nineteen, but haven't yet shown up on the assessment rolls.
Okay, so the next question I have, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Is, uh, the ta, is, I'm assuming it's the two thousand and nineteen tax rate that's used to calculate it?
Correct. Using the two thousand and nineteen tax rate, we take in a hundred and seventy-one thousand of additional revenue over last year's revenue. Alright, now, and does that walk us completely through seven B, or five B rather?
Uh, no, no, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the next portion of that was, uh, the impact of the proposed, uh, or, or where, where we stand now at four point four seven percent, what that tax rate would be on residential properties with, uh, no change in, in assessed value.
Okay.
Which is the chart.
That's right. So, so that's the next thing. So now, the four point four seven, that's the rate that we need to balance? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, the four, the, the four point four seven percent is where, where we, where we stood after budget meeting number two.
Right.
So we're, we're just using, using that.
That is the rate that we would need to balance at the end of budget meeting number two. And that rate, which is a four point four seven tax rate increase, which swallows up the point three reduction by county, and the four point nine seven reduction by education, that rate, we see the effect of it. Now, how do we read this chart? What it tells us is that our new rate would go to z, point, to zero point zero one one nine, five eight one eight. And on a assessed value between zero and a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, of which we have four hundred and eight homes, at an average assessed value of one forty-five, the new taxes would be one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-four cents this year, a twenty-eight dollar and fifty cent increase over last year. Did I read that correct?
That is correct.
Alright, and then moving down for properties assessed between a hundred and ninety thousand and four hundred and sixty-six thousand, of which we have six hundred and eleven such properties, with an average assessed value of two hundred and eighty thousand, the average tax would go from three thousand, two ninety-three, twenty-six, to three thousand, three forty-eight, twenty-nine. Those people would see their tax bill increased by fifty-five dollars and three cents. Did I read that right?
Yes, you did.
Alright, now going down to the last group, this is assessed values over four hundred and sixty-six thousand, of which we only have seven properties in the township. Which seems strange, seems low, low.
Um, if you look at the, uh, title of that particular column?
All properties with no change.
With no change in CVA.
So does that mean to say that we had a number of properties in that range that didn't see a current val, a no, a change in their CVA?
Correct.
And only seven saw changes? No.
No, no.
Seven didn't see.
Seven saw.
Seven didn't see.
Seven saw no change.
Why wouldn't they see a change?
Okay, so.
No, because that's IMPACT's, uh, uh, value assessment of that property, so they either saw.
I mean, can we not rationalize, uh, in our minds, why they wouldn't see a, a change? I mean, when you've got thousands of others that are getting changed, why would you have seven that don't get changed?
Well, the secret to that comes on the two charts below. And if you look at the two charts below, if you look at the circle chart on the left-hand side, here's the number of residential properties in our township, and you'll see that one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two of them had a change in their CVA, current value assessment, which is being phased in over four years. But the blue part of the, of the pie represents one thousand and twenty-six that had no change in their CVAs.
But I don't understand why that would occur. I mean, if you're, uh, does that mean that their C, their assessment in previous years
Was too high.
Was higher than it should have been?
Quite conceivably. There was lots of them that we saw either drop.
And so they didn't go for, uh, review or whatever?
Uh, some could have gone for review, for sure.
They not wanted or?
But, uh, but a lot of times, just in the reassessment, the, the IMPACT does, does, uh, realign the numbers based on their, uh, their evaluation.
Imperfect system, but.
Yep.
Well, one of the things that they point out to us at the Roma Conference is with nineteen million properties to assess, the, they rely heavily on the comparables. And, and as we know, we can all find, um, problems with their comparables, because sometimes their comparables are not even in the same market area, which distorts their comparables. And so this is where we get now, but anyway, looking at properties assessed at over four hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh, the average of which is se, five hundred and seventy-five, their taxes would go up by a hundred and thirteen dollars and two cents. So there's your impact of four point four seven percent increase. Yeah, increase in the tax rate.
And there is one line there, uh, ch, through the chair. There's a line where if the assessment per hundred thousand, the change on a percent, on, uh, on a hundred thousand of assessments, so you can do kind of a multiple, would be nineteen dollars and sixty cents per year. So for instance, if it was a two hundred thousand dollar home, it would be just shy of forty dollars a year.
Yeah, so it'd be nineteen sixty-six times two.
Yeah, just to give a kind of, you know, because they're, these are, I've picked ranges, but it, to try to give some, uh, simple math in terms of a hundred thousand for assessment.
Okay. And of course, I think what bothers me most here is that basically we ride on the county reduction and the health and the, uh, and, uh, education reduction. Now, there's more on the back of that sheet, I think? The rate of change in the assessed values. Now, as I look at this, well, interpret this one to me.
I will. Um, so in ter, in terms of, I, and I struggled with this chart just because I wanted to make it, um, you know, understandable without. And I did show the CIO another, uh, sheet that I had, which had a lot more numbers on it and became a lot more confusing. So my intent here is to try to give a sense of, of what, uh, the impact of the tax payment would be just on the phase-in portion. So you almost have to take your first page and say, you know, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar house, we would have that nineteen sixty-six times the two. And then if it was a two hundred thousand dollar house last year, and now it's a two hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty, you know, add the assessed value change, then you add that value to that, to that number. So I don't know if that's clear or not, but that's what my intent was.
Yeah. Yes, because, because going back to the previous page, going back to the previous page, if, if you had a a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar house in twenty nineteen, you did not have a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar house in twenty twenty. It would be slightly more.
Well, I'll tell you, tell you the way I handled that predict, this particular chart. I took my own property. I picked the range that was on the left-hand column. And, uh, I looked at the, at the phase in, the amount of the phase in, okay? And then I have a spreadsheet where I reduce the, the county by point oh three, and I reduce the education by the four percent. And I put in the new value, point zero one one nine, and I calculate the tax rate. And, uh, so I get my increase, okay? I know what my increase would be. So this is a way of, this chart is trying to capture that type of thing.
So what did you find your increase to be, just dollars?
Oh, you want, oh, that's kind of a personal.
Yes, true.
Mine would, mine would be, uh, eighty-two dollars, based on my, uh.
Okay.
That's at the, uh, that's at the two point eight or the, on the front sheet, uh, two point eight one percent.
Okay, so now, we see that, go ahead then, with your interpretation here.
Um, and, and really what I was trying to express is that, um, basically, the, the, a lot of the properties, as you can see, the six hundred and nine properties are in that smaller range from three dollars up to thirty dollars. There's three hundred and four properties in that thirty-two dollar to sixty dollar range. Uh, and then we have other properties certainly that are going to be at a higher value than, than that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a, a question, uh, Madam Treasurer. So if I took the number of properties, we'll say thirty-nine at the bottom, and added the seven, that would give me what total?
No, no, those two numbers are not synonymous, unfortunately, no. Uh, the seven is really just the, uh, range of, uh, value homes. This thirty-nine is the assessed, like, properties with changes in, in CVA. So they're not necessarily properties that are, uh, over four hundred and sixty-six thousand. They could be properties that are, were two hundred and now are two hundred and, uh, fifteen, two fifty.
Yeah.
So it doesn't always correlate that that's the highest value property. It might be that, you know, your five hundred thousand property, thousand dollar property increased by twenty-seven hundred dollars, quite conceivably. You know, it, it, it could be an incremental change. So it's not an easy correlation, unfortunately.
Okay, so, for me to figure out how many properties in the township there are, do I add the thirteen twenty-two and the ten twenty-six?
As in residential properties?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, now, so then, this has nothing to do with business properties?
No, these are all residential.
Okay.
Three oh ones or three thirteens, uh, is a, is a class code or property code from IMPACT.
Good, okay, thank you.
Single family residential, no multi-res, just single family residential.
Alright, so to summarize where we are, five twenty-five, a four point four seven increase in the tax rate balances us to where we were when we left here at the last meeting. Now we go to five C, and we find out that we have a problem. And the problem is, is, is the deficit from last year. And the deficit from last year comes in two areas. One is vehicle expenses. Where we're over, well, I'll go to the CIO. I thought I understood this, but I'm not, I'm not coming to the numbers that I had in my head. So let you just talk to this chart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, uh, we're showing a pre-audit deficit of, of pretty much close to two hundred and twenty thousand. There's re, there's really three areas, uh, that, that, that expenses are, uh, are extremely high, that really contribute, are the main contributors to that, to that deficit. So we're about eighty, eighty thousand over, um, our, our budget in, in vehicle expenses. Um, a hundred and three thousand over in, in winter control. And, uh, the com, the combination of some extra work with, uh, with the, uh, requirements on base with, uh, Pittston Road, and the unbudgeted, um, uh, truck for, for, for public works. Uh, that, uh, at, at, at the time, we had, uh, thought with all of the capital projects, uh, with the pricing that was coming in, that we would be able to, uh, to cover that, and it, it, it would appear that, uh, that that is not, um, completely the case. So, uh, ba, based on that, uh, what, uh, what, what I'm recommending is that, that we draw a hundred and fifty thousand from the public works reserve and draw seventy thousand from winter control reserve to offset the deficit. And that would, uh, the public works reserve balance, uh, at the, at the end of, uh, twenty nineteen, be three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. And the transfer out would bring that down to two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and sixty, uh, and seventy-five cents. And the twenty twenty draft budget includes a transfer of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty, to bring that balance back up to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, so, let's stop you there, because, uh, you're a bridge too far and a, and a tad too fast. Um, so let's talk first about the winter control, because I think that's the easiest one to deal with. Um, we had, we're, we're about a hundred and three thousand over. And we do have a reserve account, or, um.
Our winter control reserves is, is at ninety thousand.
Uh, now, just a minute, I wanna get that in front of everybody.
So if you look at, uh.
That's on page eighteen of twenty-five?
Page, uh, eighteen of twenty-five, yes.
Okay, so on page eighteen of twenty-five, if we go down and we find the winter control line, we see that, uh, we're scheduled to have, we were scheduled to have ninety thousand in that line uh, on the end of December. But our winter control is over, and you're recommending that we take seventy out of that.
That is, that is correct.
Alright, so if we take seventy out of that, that would leave twenty in that reserve line for problems that we might have during this winter control season. Then you're budgeting to put an additional. Then you're budgeting to put an additional 20 in from this year's taxation and draw that line back up to 40. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, now, if we went along with that recommendation, we would be reducing our deficit, which you're saying was roughly 120,000, 220,000. We would be reducing that deficit by 70,000 to roughly, if my math is correct, 150,000. Now, I'm going to ask the table to just concentrate on that single recommendation as a first step. And just some background information. When we established our 2019 budget, I think we knew we were a little bit optimistic on our winter control line, and staff did flag for us the fact that we would probably be over. Now, I know that we did say to them, we'll have to make it up in some other places. We said that. And I, and I can tell you that the results are here in front of us now. However, that line, that winter control earmarked reserve line of 100, of 90,000 was specifically for that purpose. So, I'm asking the table this question. Does everyone agree with the recommendation that 70,000 be withdrawn from that earmarked reserve to cover the deficit in the winter control over expenditure? I want some discussion on that specific item. Round the table, please. Okay?
I tend to agree that we should do that. The problem I have is that it would leave us 40 coming into the next year, which to me makes us more vulnerable than we were this year.
Well, unless we increase our budget, our winter control budget. And so, to answer that question, what are we budgeting in winter control this year compared to last year? And I don't have that in front of me.
Could you, could you give us just a minute?
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll deal with this very slowly, step by step.
284, 284,000.
Mr. Mayor, last year, we budgeted in the winter control budget, 263,686.
That's correct.
And this year, we are budgeting 271,200.
270?
No, I have 284.
Okay, so, Mr. Guest, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, sir.
Uh, where did you get your two numbers from?
From the budget sheets I work on to submit to.
That would've been November, right?
If I may, through the chair, on, on your, in your package, under the operating section, under the item under operating, there is a, there's a spreadsheet that, a report from UNISOL.
Okay, so, is it in today's package?
It is in today's package.
What's the page reference?
Page 24 of 25.
Okay, page 24 of 25?
Yeah, about a little more than 50% of winter control.
I haven't found it yet.
284.
Winter control. 2019 actual was 366?
Yeah.
We're budgeting 284. All right. Now, does that answer that question?
Well, except that I have some issues with the 284. Like, if, if we've, if we've spent 366, and, I mean, we're currently in a, maybe in a winter that isn't so normal or a little bit minus, or a little more normal minus. If we get back next year to a winter like we had last winter, which wasn't overly bad.
Yeah, depending on weather.
Yeah. We're going to be under, way under with 284. Like, I don't, we don't have enough money in there, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, depending on weather.
Yeah.
We don't have enough money in there compared to the weather last year.
That's right.
Okay, so.
So, it's a degree of vulnerability that I'm concerned about.
Exactly. And we only have, and we would only have 40,000 protection against the vulnerability?
Yeah.
All right, so, but back to the main issue. First of all, do we agree with the, with the staff's recommendation to take 20 out of that winter control as a way of trying to address this year's, excuse me, as a way of trying to be, uh, address the 2019 over expenditure?
70,000.
Okay, so 70 sounds reasonable. Next speaker.
Final thing. We better look after the balance last year's budget first before we start worrying about what we're putting in for next, next year.
Okay, different issue?
The only place we got to take it from is the 70,000.
Okay, all right. Second speaker, next speaker.
Sure. Um, if I may, just from the 263 to get to the 366.
Uh, no, I got to follow you.
Page 24.
Page 24.
So, just back to the winter control on point four. How did, how did, I mean, how did we get there? How do we get 100,000, 103,000 over, over budget? Is it, is it because the sidewalk plow broke down and the costs of the fixing was, that went into it? Or what exactly put us 103 over?
Certainly, if I, if I may, through the chair, at, when we passed the budget on, at our last budget meeting in 2019 on April 18th, our winter control budget was at 91% spent. So, the, the October to December timeframe was about 44% spent, which is, which I would say is typical, typical winter operations. So, we, 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 we had a high, heavy dose in January, February, March of, of 2019. Like, 30, 30%, or, or so higher than what we would typically, you know, range between 60 to 65.
So, so are we saying like an increased use of, of materials? More gas costs, or are we talking?
So, we would be, we would be speaking materials, labor, and, and I can't say specifically whether there was a, I, I, knowing by, and maybe Jim could help me, but I, my feeling is that there was a number of weekend and, you know, overnight events, which, which are overtime, which increased that, that, that cost as well. So, it's just a combination of, of a lot of activity.
If I can.
Yeah, and I, yes, by all means, and then I see Mr. Guest wants into.
Okay, so my, I think where I'm headed with it is that are there, because of poor capital, meaning, you know, a poor plow truck, are there repairs to, you know, is that driving this number up substantially because we were, you know, fixing machinery and putting it through operational costs? Or, or is it actually, you know, snow removal costs?
So, so, so through the chair, with that winter control item, that is, that is no plowing, removal, material costs on?
So, wages, materials, it's not for maintenance or?
Not for vehicles.
It's not for vehicles, not for maintenance. Okay.
Okay, and yes or no on, on the staff recommended to take 70 out of the winter?
That's what's before.
Okay, and Counselor Hunter, next?
Mr. Guest first.
Okay, Mr. Guest.
Just quickly through, through the chair, um, all my staff works 2,080 hours a year, okay? This cost for equipment and that is in another account, repair, maintenance, gas, fuel. This is strictly winter control, which is another, what the CAO said. It is definitely Mother Nature effect. We had a rough January this year. We had a storm weather in the weekend, okay? That 2,080 hours that I, I booked each maintenance in the roads area for each, in each staff member, I booked so many hours of winter control time, plus overtime. Okay, so now, when Mother Nature strikes on a weekend, that's a full day of overtime. But if strikes like today, they're on, they're on regular time during, during the body of the day, they use 73. So, so that's where the, the anomaly came in is when these starts hit. And my crystal ball, I've been in this business 40 years, my crystal ball's no good, Mother Nature calls.
Okay, but, I'm going to jump in just quickly and say to, to you, to Mr. Guest, that you've just opened yourself up because what we're trying to get to here is what is the reason for this 103,000? So, if, if the reason is because you budgeted 200, 2,080 hours, what was the actual hours?
The actual hours, the actual hours, I don't have that in front of me.
Well, again.
But, uh,
Where are you again?
Mine's going, mine's going, I'm going to let you continue. Mine's going to come back to the, to the capital. And, and the reasoning that I'm asking the question, or the reason I asked the question was, was because we were going to write that truck through capital expenses last year, the lease of the vehicle through the capital, or the, excuse me, the operational expenses last year, and it ended up going back to capital because we couldn't get it for the price that, that we wanted. That's why I asked the question. It wasn't, wasn't attacking your budget or anything like that. It was for clarification.
I didn't take it that way. It's, it's, and I used 10 years of information to come up with an average winter budget, and then for anomalies, we have accounts to look after that, so, um, thank you.
I, is the recommendation?
Yes, yeah, I, I think, I would say yes to the recommendation.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm happy with that.
Okay, next speaker.
I agree with the recommendation. The only thing I find hard to take is we don't even, we have 103,000 that were over budget, and we don't even have enough in the reserves to cover it. We're still 33,000 all the short by taking out our winter control reserves.
That's correct, that's correct. Well, we got to deal with it, and the staff has made one recommendation. We'll deal with the recommendations one at a time. I've asked the staff to come back with enough recommendations to address that entire 220. Did I not?
You did.
Okay, and this is the first recommendation against that 220, to address that 220. And I'm reading, the way I'm reading the table is that everybody so far would understand and, and support the recommendation to reduce, to take, to, to draw 70 out of that, out of that reserve. And someplace I made a note that that takes us, that takes our problem from 220 to 150. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so, all speakers have spoken to that issue. Now, I'm going to summarize this discussion that way. I read the table this way. There is consensus to support the staff recommendation to draw 70,000 from the winter control reserve against the 220,000 overage. And I'm, that's the way I'm reading the table, and so I'm saying that that recommendation is approved by the table. Now, I'm going on. Furthermore, and I'm looking at page 12 of 25. This is going to move to a second recommendation. The Public Works Reserve balance at December the 31st was 360,000. So, let's find the Public Works Reserve, which is on page 18 to 25, which is the line item above the line that we were just speaking to. And as you will see, we were hoping to have 360,160.75 in that line item. Now, this transfer out, which transfer out would reduce the reserve to 220, 210? Which transfer out is that talking about?
So, Mr. Mayor, if we transferred out 150,000 to, to cover that remaining portion of the deficit?
Okay, that's the 150?
Yes.
Okay, so now, here's a recommendation to draw 150 out of there, leaving actually 210 in with a, a budget transfer in of 88 during this year, bringing it back to 298 at the end of this current year. All right, now, addressing yourselves to the recommendation to withdraw 150 from that specific line item, 3520. Speakers again, and go all around the table in the opposite direction. Counselor Dillabaw first.
I'm, uh, I will accept that recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that's one speaker. Next speaker.
Yes, I concur.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Mr. Counselor Hunter. All right, and last speaker.
I agree.
All right, the way I read the table is that that recommendation is accepted.
I still look at the, at the other side of the problem for the 2020.
Yes, Counselor Hunter points out, that's a different item, right? All right, so now, I'm going to take my 150, which is the hole that I was in, and I've withdrawn another 150 from those two reserves. Am I correct in saying that I'm balanced, that I have now accommodated the overage, the over expenditure from 2019? Is that correct?
As it, as it sits right now.
All right, so with the acceptance of those two recommendations, the 2019 budget is balanced pre-audit. Is that correct? All right. Now, the next question is, where do I go from here? Next page. At the January 27th budget meeting, committee had recommended transfer, we just dealt with that, right?
Uh, no, so, so, at, at the, at the January 27th budget meeting, committee recommended transferring out 150,000 to, to the Public Works Reserve to fund the purchase of, of the vehicles and equipment.
Oh, that's correct. Now, and it's just coincidence that the two numbers are the same?
It, it is.
All right, so there's two different 150 holes here. We put a patch on one, now we're going to, we're, we're going to go back and, we're going to go back and revisit the recommendation.
I think, I, I think you, I, I think you, that committee should reconsider that, that decision now in light of.
Right, in light of the fact that there is only 210 left in there.
That is correct.
Does everybody understand where we are?
Now, we do, yes.
Okay, so now, we're being asked to, we're being asked to reconsider that decision recognizing that the intent of that original decision was to fund the purchase of vehicles and equipment. All right, so, how do I want to phrase this? If we rescind, well, first of all, staff had recommended that transfer out. Did we agree to it at the previous meeting?
You mean the January meeting?
Yes, at the January 27th meeting.
Uh, actually, that, that direction came from, from committee.
At that meeting?
At that meeting.
Okay, so, so in that, in fact, we did make that decision. Now, we're being asked to reverse it?
Reconsider.
I, I, I'm saying reconsidered?
Which is the same as saying and reverse, but anyway, we won't go there. Let's not argue over words. So, the question that I'm going to ask first is, if we reconsider that decision, considering that there's only 210 left, how then are you going to fund the purchase of vehicles and equipment?
So, that is, uh, on. So that is, uh, on number five D.
That's on number five D, so we'll deal with that later?
Uh, we'll, we'll deal with that later.
Okay, all right.
One, one remaining item, uh.
Well, let's deal with them one at a time.
Yep, so if, if, if we can, um, remain on, uh, on, on this sheet with respect to the winter control reserve.
Yes.
So we, 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 we recommend that we transfer in twenty thousand in, in, into the draft budget. And that would've, that would've been that, um, winter, uh, control reserves up to forty thousand at the end of twenty-twenty.
Oh, yes, and we, because we made the other decision but not this one?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so we got two decisions here now, still on page thirteen to twenty-five.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so the first is to reconsider our decision to transfer out a hundred and fifty thousand uh, for the purchase of vehicles and equipment. So, speakers, to that recommendation. And I guess what we would be considering is uh, we're not going to withdraw a hundred and fifty more from the two-hundred-and-ten that would be left.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for speakers to speak to that recommendation. And the C A O advises us that the whole question of purchases of vehicles and equipment will be dealt with next item up. So we're separating things into little tiny pieces here. So, Mr. Bradley's first speaker.
What am I, what am I to consider?
So if you're looking on page eighteen and twenty-five, we're at, we're looking at this reserve called Public Works, three-five-two-zero. We had hoped to finish the year with three-hundred-and-sixty in there.
Well, the way I interpreted this, uh, earlier today was that that one-fifty, it refers to the one-fifty for the capital purchases of it.
Actually, by coincidence, it refers to two things. Two different things.
As far as this sheet is concerned, the thinking was that, you know, that that would be the, what we're taking out of there for the capital equipment. But now that one-fifty is gonna be used to, uh, offset the nineteen deficit. So that leaves two-ten and, uh, we're not gonna take another hundred and fifty out of that because it basically busts it open. So.
So all we need, all we need is agreement to reverse our decision.
The decision to take the one-fifty, I agree.
Okay. Counselor Hunter?
I can't take that much of it.
Okay, we have agreement there so, too far, so two speakers so far. Next speaker deputy.
It certainly depletes it. I'd have to say that's a bit much.
Okay, next speaker, Counselor Cameron.
Can't support it. Yeah, I, I, we have to take, we have to reverse it.
Okay, next speaker, Counselor Dilawat.
Oh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question on that one? Uh, that's the two-seventy, that's the tandem truck that we're replacing, the two-oh-five. Is that right?
Yes, that, uh, the, uh.
We dumped a hundred and fifty out?
We, we, we had budgeted, uh, at, at, in meeting number two to take out a hundred and fifty towards the, uh, that, that tandem axle truck, yes.
Now, is that the one that we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on last year on repairs? T eight? Can you help me?
Yeah, well, the only problem is we're getting off, off the issue. I wanna get back to the issue.
No, I can't, I can't support it. I wanna take it out back.
Okay, all right, and then we'll deal with your truck in a minute. We'll deal with your truck in a minute. Okay, so the way I'm reading the table is we, we, um, agree with the staff recommendation to reconsider that earlier decision and we will not take an additional hundred and fifty out of that reserve. Have I captured that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, so that gets that out of the way. Now, the last item to talk about on the same page, eighteen and twenty-five, we have a recommendation that we put an additional, no, excuse me, that we transfer twenty thousand from current year taxation. Am I getting this right?
Back into the winter.
Back into the winter control budget, three-five-two-one, winter, winter control reserve, three-five-two-one. Okay?
I agree.
Okay, so now I'm going in reverse again?
I'm good with that.
Okay, all right. Counselor Hunter? All right, so that gets us, now, let, so let's see where that leaves us as it pertains to this sheet eighteen of twenty-five. On sheet eighteen of twenty-five, our reserves, as they will be shown, subject to audit, as they will be shown on December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, will show public works with a budget of two, uh, with, with a budget, public works earmarked reserve with a balance of two-ten, one-sixty, and winter control account three-five-two-one with a balance of twenty. Okay? And we've agreed that we'll put twenty ba- twenty, uh, from current year taxation into three-five-two-one to bring it up to forty, and that's where we stand as of five-fifty-eight. All right, now, we move on from there. Now where are you taking me now, Mr. Grant? And I hope it's nice. Now you're at five D?
Yes.
And you're on capital adjustments. Now, the result of balancing the twenty-nineteen budget places the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand that was originally planned to offset a portion of the purchase of tandem axle truck, number twenty-five, Counselor Dilawat? That's, that's what this line is, is referring to?
Well, I'm, I'm.
No.
T eight.
Well, balance, uh, is Counselor Dilawat correct? It was originally planned to offset the purchase of tandem axle truck in question. Is that T eight, T five, or which one is that?
T eight's a single axle. It, it's the one that we will get rid of.
What's the truck reference?
Reference truck is truck, uh, three.
T three?
T three.
Okay, that's the one that's being moved out? And there's a new one being purchased? What's his name? The one that's being purchased?
T eight.
Give him a name.
It would be, it would be, uh, two-thousand and twenty, uh, dash three.
Two-twenty dash three, and he's a tandem axle truck.
Right.
Drawing an additional hundred and fifty thousand from the public works reserve now would drop the projected balance to one-thirty-eight. So we've, we've determined that we're not doing that, have we not?
That, 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 that is, that is correct.
All right, so that's.
I did not want to prejudge what that decision was.
Okay, got you. So we're not doing that. Now here are a couple of suggestive alternatives available instead of further dropping the reserve. Number one, remove the gravel to surface treatment program, except Latimer Road from the capital budget. Now, if you go back to your capital budget, trying to get there. You go back to your capital budget, which was on page six to twenty-five, you will see that your surface treatment program was what? Three-hundred-and-thirteen?
Seven-fifty.
Seven-fifty?
From taxation.
All coming from taxation?
Total program is four-fifty.
What's that?
Four-hundred-and-fifty, seven-fifty is the total.
Yes?
Three-hundred-and-thirteen of the total taxation.
That's right. So, so the option is, is to remove the gravel to sur- surface treatment, excluding Latimer, from the capital budget. The estimated cost of the program is three-thirteen, seven-fifty, as you can see, which was to come from taxation. The road superintendent has expressed concern about proceeding with the gravel to surface treatment program this year. The roads completed in twenty-seventeen program have not hauled up well. This appears to be a combination of poor product binding and large agricultural equipment traveling on the surface treatment. The road superintendent would prefer undertaking further investigation and evaluation of alternative application techniques before continuing on with the conversion program. So you have a rationale for option one. Does council wish to remove the program for twenty-twenty? Does council wish to put a portion of this amount into a reserve fund, into a reserve to fund a possible larger scope project in twenty-twenty-one? Okay, now, two questions being asked. Let's address ourselves to the two questions. And I'm gonna start on this side of the table, Counselor Dilawat. Question is, cancel the gravel to surface treatment program of three-hundred-and-thirteen, seven-fifty? Deal with that question first, then we'll deal with what happens when we know what the decision, that decision was. See if we've got a meeting of the minds here. First speaker.
So if we, the three-thirteen, seven-fifty, that's all of our gravel surface that we planned, the Latimer and Miller Road, the whole.
No, not Latimer.
Not Latimer, or sorry, uh.
Miller Chambers.
Miller Chambers, okay, of three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. What do we do with the hundred and two thousand dollars government grant?
No, the hundred and two is for Latimer and it's earmarked, the government grant was earmarked to do Latimer, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's the one that we joined with, with, uh, camp.
North, North Grenble, yes.
Okay, so yes or no to that question?
Yes, I'm fine if, uh, if the superintendent, if their, our superintendent wants to take that and investigate further.
Second speaker. That's you.
I don't, I don't. Yeah, I would, yes, I, I, I would, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the Chambers Road, but, okay, yes, I, yes.
All right, seeing we're in dire straits. Next speaker.
Hey, through the chair, can I ask Mr. Gass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Gass, um, the, the one-oh-two remains, remains in despite your, you know, recommendation of saying that you prefer that it was, uh, to, to investigate. What, what's your opinion on the one-oh-two meaning?
Mr. Chair, through, through the chair, uh, the, um, Latimer Road, we have a, I agree with growth, right, so, um, that's the, that's pretty much the driving factor. However, they are gonna use one of the techniques that I wanna investigate for our gravel roads. So I'm waiting to see that. I'm also, uh, I'll be at good votes, uh, in, at the end of this month, I'll be looking at other alternatives available to us that will help us keep that surface in place. And, uh, um, we know that there's other issues with some of the roads, but, drainage, 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 but, um, this, this is, the surface, I'm, I'm not happy with the way it came up in the last, the last round and, and I know it feels good recommendation to say spend money and, and, and take another chance, so.
So, so follow up the, the, just for clarity, the one-oh-two that we'd be, uh, working with, uh, North Grenble with would be, uh, a different treatment than we applied in twenty-seventeen? Not the same?
It, it, it is still surface treatment, but there is also a microsurface on top of it. Okay, so it's a, a second application, um, on, on top of the microsurface to help buy that better and, 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 uh, and that's, that's my understanding is it, it works, so, um, but there are other alternatives I'd like to check on.
Okay, so open it, we're all around first. Okay, next speaker.
I'm fine. I think most people know my feeling. I'm not a lover of double surface treatment. Anyway, I don't think it stands up. I think it's just a poor man's road that lasts four or five years. If you redo it, I'd sooner see us invest their money in, in asphalt treatment, build the roads up proper and put the asphalt rather than just chip on them, so. I'm fine with taking it out.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I agree, take it out. The only thing I have is that, uh, like, we've been working on the gravel roads for what, centuries? Like, were we not using effective techniques, uh, latest technology, that kind of thing? Like, if we're gonna take this out and we're gonna have still one of the sixty-some-odd kilometers of, of gravel road, we better find a pro- a technique and, or a technology or whatever that works because we're putting, spending one hell of a lot of money on this every year. So that's my, like, secondary concern. Take it out, I'm happy to take it out.
Okay, now I just, I just wanna address that concern Counselor Cameron wants in here, but I just wanna address that concern just briefly. And I'm very heavily influenced by a comment that was made to me by the previous county road superintendent, uh, what less Shepard. And Mr. Shepard, an engineer, uh, I've with the counties for quite some period of time, was also a member of a superintendent's task force that worked on developing a standard for the adhesive that's used to bind the materials that hold together surface treatment. And Mr. Shepard told us on many occasions that there is no provincial standard for that adhesive. And he said, we worked with scientists, we worked with chemists, we developed a standard of an adhesive that would stand up for many years. And as we would get that standard coming up the political hierarchy into the ministry, to the point where it would become regulation, the roads product industry lobby was so strong that our recommendations got sidelined. And consequently, where I used to do surface treatment that I knew was good for twenty years, I have done surface treatment in the last two or three years that won't last two or three years. It's because of the adhesives and the poor quality of the adhesives. That was his underlying conclusion. Sorry to digress, Counselor Cameron wanted in.
Wouldn't we be better than to, to try and obviate that problem by doing what Counselor Hunter has said and that has moved more to, to a paving?
That's, that's a discussion for another day, but more and more, I'm beginning to think Counselor Hunter may be correct. Counselor Cameron?
I just wanna go back, uh, this more clarification, uh, than, than anything else on the, on the one-oh-two. The one-oh-two is our half of Latimer Road. Correct, correct. Is there any chance that North Grenble is gonna back out of this, this year, or are they really committed? I mean, a hundred percent committed?
Mr. Chair, I have talked to them, um, late last year. It's in their budget. I have a call-in right now to see if it's still in their budget. My understanding is it still is, but they haven't gone back to me, so.
So we can hear back on that at another time. Thank, thank, thank you.
Yes? Just back to the, to where, where we were at earlier, is that that one-oh-two, you're basically gonna use that as a, as an experiment almost for, for the future of this program that we're deferring now?
No, Mr. Chair, no, um, this is a technique that's used by the road superintendent in North Grenble. Um, one that is a, it enhances that surface and, um, I've, I've used this product before as well, but not in this application, so. So, uh, he's done some roads. I'm gonna go see them once the snow clears, but, uh, um, and we had a meeting on Latimer Road back in December, um, to go over the project, but, uh, you know, it's a, it's not an experiment. It's, it's more using his technique. Let's see how it works. Um, I, uh, just to make sure everybody understands, the, the, the wear of that surface is not only because of the, of materials and the, and the, and the emulsions, it's the traffic and, and traffic, um, it's only recommended for so much traffic. And, and traffic, um, it's only recommended for so much traffic. It's never been looked at through that same committee on what farm equipment's due to it. And, and I know we have farm equipment and we have to live with them. Part of the report and investigation that I'll do will consider maybe doing some of these roads in asphalt and, and, and going that route, but I've gotta look at that as an alternative as well. So, several plus going to the, the asphalt.
Okay, now, uh, did you want to call, uh, that would be the dead horse, but the, so, so you've kinda done with what, the what I'm hearing, you're kinda done with the old way? And, and this is an attempt to, to look at a new way? Am I wrong in my hearing? That's what I'm, that's how I feel what I read and it sounds like what you're saying.
I can't say yes, a hundred percent, because there are still applications where surface treatment will work, okay? Um, less travel roads, um, that sort of thing. Uh, and little farm, uh, activity, um, traffic load. Um, so it's still an alternative and it's a very, um, uh, cost-effective alternative. We have on this list several roads that have heavy, heavier traffic plus heavier equipment on that road. So, we gotta come up with a solution. And that's my, that's what's gonna come out of all this provision for.
That's what I was, that's what I was, okay. Yep, no, that's good, thanks.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in here just quick with a, a quick question. Was, was last year's program, I think it was last year's program, was last year's program, um, hooked on to the county program? Or did we do it on our own?
No, it, it was actually, twenty seventeen, we did the last surface treatment program here. So, um, uh, but no, we did it ourselves, I tendered, tendered it accordingly.
So we were not hooked on to the county program?
No, and the, the county program is, um, they don't do a lot of surface treatment.
No, I know they don't.
So, um, it depends on the year.
Yeah.
And, uh, but we do, we, we have enough volume to get, get the rate.
Okay.
Get the rate.
Okay, so.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just wanna clarify, uh, Good and Duke Low and Hurley were done in twenty seventeen through the county?
Yes.
With a single, with, with a single, with a single surface and reports were not, uh.
I know, but that was the second time Good and Duke Low and Hurley were done.
That is correct, that is correct, they, they, they had reached, they had reached the seven day earmark, yes.
Four years later.
Pardon?
Four years later.
Yes, not much. Okay, so now, does council wish to remove the program for 2020? I'm, I read consensus at the table, I'm not gonna ask for a vote or show hands, but I read consensus at the table that council will remove the program that was budgeted to cost three thirteen seven fifty from taxation. That resolves that issue. Next issue, does council wish to put a, now, by the way, having addressed that issue in that manner, we're still on option one, I have not gone to option two yet. Second part of the issue, does council wish to put a portion of the three thirteen into reserve to fund a possible larger scope project in 2021? Now, before I bring the discussion on that item, Tom, I think it's fair to say that we've now removed three thirteen seven fifty from taxation. And now we're deciding whether some or all of it will go back into a reserve to fund a possible larger scope project in 2021. So, addressing yourselves to that particular question, yes or no, and the amount that's in your head? Okay, question?
The question I have is, on the second paragraph, does council wish to put a portion of this amount reserve into a large scope project, a larger scope project in 2021? Is that what you're talking about? Is that what you're going to research through Latimer Road and possibly at your Good Roads, uh, conference? Is that what you're getting at here?
Yes.
I think, okay.
Okay, so now the question is, yes or no, and the amount? And where am I here, starting there again?
Well, I guess a hundred and fifty of the three thirteen should be, is kinda set aside for the positive, you know, purchase of that T3, replacement of the T3.
Okay, so Mr. Bradley is for a hundred and fifty?
And so that goes for T3, that leaves you.
Wait a minute, for T3?
The truck.
Oh, the truck?
So.
Oh, I see, I see.
Okay?
Yeah?
We, we, we're taking out three thirteen, okay, because we knocked off the one fifty for the truck for the, and the other thing.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I'd like to see is that three thirteen, draw down one fifty for the replacement of the T3. And then the balance would be, um, you know, a hundred and sixty, probably. Um, I'd like to see us, uh, look at, uh, um, putting that somewhere where we can do something with roads. Because we're gonna have to transition sometime over the next several years to get rid of some of these roads which are constant, like, the surface treatment is constantly using up money. And if it's not being productive and we're going back within a very short period of time, we gotta look at how we're gonna get around that issue. So I would put the balance into, into, um, I guess, uh, maybe a near mark or, uh, into the public works, uh, side of the thing.
But more for hard surface than cert, yeah, surface street?
Yeah.
Okay, next speaker, Mr. Counselor Hunter.
Well, I think we definitely gotta take a hundred and fifty thousand, let, let go towards the purchase of the two trucks. The other hundred and sixty there, before we decide that we're definitely designated that into any particular reserve there, I think we need to go back and go through and see where our whole budget stands before we, I think we just set that hundred and sixty aside for now and see where we're, our taxation rate ends and what we have to clean up here. We got twenty thousand more that were already approved to go over into reserves for the snow removals, hasn't been accounted for. So if you take that out of that, that puts us down to one forty. Let's go through the rest of it and see what, if we got that one forty ended at, at the end and we're happening with the tax rate you're at, okay, we put that over into a special reserve for hard, for asphalt as far as I'm concerned, but into a special reserve for the road. Let's see where we are at the end first.
Okay, so, before I ask the deputy to speak, I'm going to ask the, the treasurer to tell me where I am here. Um, with the decisions that have been made up to this point in time.
So, we started with a, uh, with an amount of two fifty six eight forty nine that we needed to raise. By adding the hundred and fifty back, uh, onto taxation, plus the twenty thousand dollar for the, um, for the transfer into winter control, we would be at four twenty six eight forty nine. And then you would take out the three thirteen seven fifty, you're down to a hundred and thirteen thousand ninety nine.
Before I get where?
That's what you need to raise, a hundred and thirteen ninety nine is what we would need to raise in additional taxation.
Over and above the four point four seven percent?
No, 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 you went from two fifty six, and we went up to two, four twenty six, taking off the three thirteen, we are at one thirteen.
Okay, and, and, and I'm, I'm gonna say this, that I'm so concentrated here that I'm not following the numbers.
So, we started with two fifty six, I'm not gonna add the eight forty nine because it's just.
I'm not sure what you mean by started with two fifty six.
We, we had, we had to raise the four point four seven or the two hundred and fifty six thousand.
And we did that? Oh, no, we didn't.
We haven't done that yet, we, that's where we were at at the end, at the end of last budget.
Yeah, that's right.
So, with the, adding back the, the hundred and fifty for the truck, the twenty thousand for the winter control, and then taking off the gravel to surface, we're at now a hundred and thirteen. Which is just shy of two percent, cause fifty seven thousand into the hundred and thirteen is just, oh, just shy of two percent.
Okay, next speaker.
Yeah, so, looking ahead at, at next year though, at, at replacement for 2021, we have five hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of, uh, equipment to replace and will only have a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in reserves.
No, no, we want taking the other hundred and fifty, we're having, we'll, we'll be at two ninety eight in public works.
So two, so we'll be at three hundred, so we'll still have two hundred and seventy thousand to generate in there.
Okay, now, you didn't address yourself to the comments that Mr. Bradley, Mr. Hunter were making about taking a hundred and fifty of that three thirteen to go back towards that T3 truck?
Of the, um, of the three thirteen that we'd be getting back from option one, uh, is, is that all taxation dollars or is any of that gas tax?
No, it is all current, was, in the original draft budget was all taxation supported.
I was looking, I just was fumbling through papers trying to find it, so all through taxation, no, no gas tax, so. Favor getting rid of it, I, I just, you know, building that reserve back up for next year so we don't find ourselves in a, you know, a big group.
Okay, I'm talking about, I, I wanna know whether you want a hundred and fifty of that to go to that truck? That replacement truck? That'll still leave a hundred and sixty hanging in the air.
I think we wanna be a little clear here, Mr. Mayor, that hundred and fifty's going, really going towards two trucks, we're buying two trucks here and, and we're gonna take one lose that's scheduled to be bought next year that we won't have to buy.
Yeah.
And it, it's gonna get rid of the one off of this list, right? Is that the, is that, hasn't been adjusted on? For now then, sure, yeah.
Next speaker.
Yes, uh, I, I, I agree, uh, with taking one fifty from the three thirteen and, and putting it where it has been suggested. The balance of the one sixty, I, I, I personally think that last, uh, that last question that I just referred to is a little premature, until you can get back to us and tell us that, hey, what I saw is nice, or hey, what, what I saw really doesn't cut it yet, I think that one sixty should be just put in a, a bay of somewhere, uh, before this, before, before these budget meetings are through, we may need that, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll, we'll set that aside, Counselor Hunter's made the same recommendation, we're setting that. We're not, we're not dealing with the remaining one sixty at this point in time.
Correct.
And, but the treasurer tells us that we're still not there yet anyway.
Correct.
Okay, now, Counselor Dilabou.
Yeah, I'm good, I, I like to truthfully bump it up to two hundred thousand, I will go along with a hundred and fifty for the, for the, uh, uh, truck and the rest.
Okay, so, I see consensus again at the table, that of the three thirteen that we had scheduled to raise from taxation for gravel to surface treatment, which is now being canceled, we will, we will raise a hundred and fifty for the purchase of equipment, two trucks. That's the consensus. So, we have consensus at the table to raise a hundred and fifty for that purpose. Now, the question is, if we raise the additional one sixty, I'm still not balanced, right? I budget, I don't have a balanced budget yet, do I?
You, you will still need to tax for, uh, the one sixty plus the hundred and thirteen.
I will still need to tax for the one sixty.
And the one thirteen.
And the one thirteen. Over and above my four point four seven.
No.
Not over and above my four point four seven. So, okay, so now I've got two issues on the table. I've got a hundred and sixty thousand that if I don't like four point four seven, I cannot raise that money, I can reduce that four point four seven, is that correct? All right, now, how do I, how do I put that question to the table in a very simple manner?
Just wait.
What's that?
Just wait, just wait.
Just wait?
Well, I think it's premature for council to decide what to do with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars before we've even reviewed the operational budget. Excuse me, Mr. CAO who we're speaking, but, um, I, I think asking the table what, if they wanna take the hundred and sixty and put it to a tax reduction before we've even looked at operational spending, is a bit premature.
Okay, all right, and that's a fair comment. And so now I say to myself, it's six thirty, do we need to, do we need to summarize all of this and see where we stand? Or are you prepared to go on and deal with the issues? Can I get a feeling around the table as to how you would prefer to handle this? So you hear what the treasurer is saying. We got, we're not balanced. We've gotta raise to, excuse me, we still have to raise a hundred and thirteen thousand to balance.
Correct.
At four point four seven? No. No, jeez, I can't get that yet, through my head yet.
No, uh, one percent of levy is fifty seven thousand, so you take the one thirteen divided, divide fifty seven into that, it's just shy of two percent. So we're at about a two percent, a tax rate increase at the moment.
So, so, so if I, so if I may, when we started the meeting, we, we were at a four point four seven tax rate proposed. Now, based on the decisions you've made so far, we're at two points.
We're under, uh, more like one point nine seven, I think.
About, about one point nine seven percent tax rate.
Oh, a tax, one point nine seven tax rate increase?
Correct.
Is where we are right now?
Correct.
Without raising that hundred, without raising that one sixty?
Right, if you add the one sixty, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to raise the tax rate to, to raise that.
And we have not looked at the operational budgets. And we've had some concern expressed around the table that some of our reserves are getting too skinny and that we should be putting, um, additional amounts into those reserves, I'm thinking specifically of the winter control reserve.
Well, can I just make a comment?
Yeah. Chair's looking for a direction here.
Well, we took the gravel surface program out.
Yeah.
That was three hundred and thirteen thousand, well, you know, P extra, like, three thirteen.
And we put a hundred and fifty back in.
We moved a hundred and fifty into buying equipment.
Yeah.
Okay, if we wanna leave the one sixty off to the side to deal with, we still have to raise three hundred and thirteen from taxation.
One hundred and thirteen. One hundred and thirteen.
No, where are you getting the money from? You got three hundred and thirteen you took out here.
Yeah, that you didn't raise.
No, but it was on the capital program to raise, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, now what we're doing is shifting, we're not, we're not canceling something, we're shifting from a gravel program to purchase equipment, you still gotta get the money. Okay, so the hundred and fifty didn't drop out of the sky, you just gotta tax for it.
Yeah.
The one sixty that we're looking at, we're not sure what we're gonna do with, is off to the side. As long as it stays there, we still have to tax for it.
Yes, that's correct.
So, we're no different from three thirteen.
Unless we don't tax for it.
Yeah, well, that's a decision we have to make later, I don't think we can do it right now. Okay, that's the way I.
Okay, I'm not, I agree, I agree with what you're saying. So the question is, we have more decisions to make, right? And the question is, do we continue with the meeting? Or do we allow the staff an opportunity to, to consolidate where we are right now?
Well, I, I think we should look at, at least look at, we should put our toe in the water on the, on the operations side.
Okay.
Okay, just to get a flavor for it.
Okay.
And, uh, and maybe that'll help us make a decision on the one sixty that we're, we're about to decide on.
All right, so let's proceed down.
That's my view.
Okay, so let's proceed down that road. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, kinda like to get in here under the 2020 town, the dress ones, so.
Now, where are we here?
Well, I'd like to bring up um a discussion on adding forty thousand dollars to the recreation capital for the waterfront at the Legion Way improvements.
Okay, and what I don't have.
A discussion.
Okay, and what I, what I, what I don't uh get out of that is, because I I I'm I'm not fully impacted by where we are as a result of the decisions that we've made thus far, so I know that there's a question of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars somewhere around, but I'm not sure where that is, I know what you're saying, we haven't raised it, we've had, we've had it in the budget.
It's off to the side, okay, and if you recall my earlier statements, I expressed some concerns about some of the reserve funds with respect to winter control and so on.
Yeah.
Which we didn't deal with, we just said, we're there, we have to look at them.
Yeah.
So there's, there's ample places to throw that one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, there's lots of opportunities.
Yeah.
So I'm not counting much on the fact that we're gonna reduce the tax rate, because, you know, there's places to put it that are critical.
Okay, all right.
In my view, that's my view.
Okay, so you want it in?
Just more of a convert, sort of a a comment and and see what, you know, Melanie thinks on this, but but ultimately, we've taken two twenty out of reserves to to make up for for last year, right? And and we've taken five point seven, which is the gravel roads budget, and and just moved it around. We haven't, we've taken that out, but we've just taken that three thirteen and just moved it somewhere else.
Correct.
So ultimately, the only reduction or the only, the only thing we've actually really done is taken two twenty out of reserves to offset that bit that would be coming in.
Um, you've sort of lost me in terms of your your reference now, so.
So could.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where we're at, that's all, because I don't have a clue at this point.
I I will attempt to, and I will probably end up confusing everybody more, but I'm I'm gonna try to simplify it. So when we started with uh five D, okay? The decisions that we made in five A, B, and C meant that there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more that we needed to find in our capital to get back to where we were at the end of budget meeting number two, okay? So you remove three thirteen, seven fifty from taxation, okay? And you've put back a hundred and fifty thousand in taxation. I would, I would forget about the hundred and sixty difference, you've removed that as it is right now, and by removing that. Right, you're at one point nine seven percent tax rate increase.
And balanced. And balanced.
We're raising the one point nine seven.
Yeah, raising the one point nine seven.
Yeah.
With ra- with raising one point nine seven, yes.
Okay, so stop, stop right there, let's make sure that everybody understands what we're, what's being said.
That cleared it up for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Then then you can decide what you want to.
Add it back on after that.
Exactly.
Yeah, all right.
Sure.
Now, okay, so we all understand where where the ground is right now. Basically, right now, we're at a one point nine seven tax rate increase and we're balanced. Okay, now, the question is, where do we go from here?
And we've solved, we solved in the two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, correct, okay, so if we look at it from that point of view. Say again?
I said, I think we need to, we got over an hour before we decided any more capital projects or anything else, I think, we gotta look at our operating budget. Personally, I think there's a couple of places to operate, and when it works for one, but I don't think we've got enough money budget. I brought that up last year when we had it, and we want them to stay at a zero percent. If we, we knew we were gonna be over budget, we knew we had ninety some percent spent, we always spend forty percent in the fall.
Yeah.
We should have raised it then, and we wouldn't have been in a deficit now.
Okay, well, you're you're beating me over the head with a wet noodle.
We gotta raise, we gotta look at that, we're, we're just raising it twenty some thousand dollars.
Okay.
We need, I think we need to be raising that winter works program by the forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
More than to guarantee that we're not, I'd say we have twenty thousand left over the year that we used to, and move that over into the winter works as a extra reserve to be drawn out of it.
All right, so so where, so the base, where we are right now, we're at a one point nine seven tax rate increase and we are balanced.
Yes.
Okay, now, Counselor Hunter says, let's go back to our operations, because we need more money in winter control. And he tells me that we need how much more money in winter control?
We need another twenty thousand dollars.
He need, he wants an additional, raise an additional twenty thousand for winter control. Mr. Bradley, what say you? Well, wait a minute, I gotta go the other end of the table, because I started with you last time. Counselor Dillbaugh is telling me he wants to raise forty thousand, he wants to spend forty thousand for waterfront. Counselor Cameron, what do you wanna do?
I wanna put twenty thousand dollars into the um the reserve that.
The winter control?
Winter control, yes.
All right, that's you?
That's out of the one sixty now.
No, 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 don't forget the one sixty, the one sixty doesn't exist.
No, no, that's that's what I mean, one one sixty does not exist.
You have not raised it, it ain't gone, it ain't there, it doesn't exist?
That's correct.
It's still in their pockets, I don't. All right, where are you?
If if it was up to me, I I would look back for documents uh actuals dating back twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, instead of arbitrarily picking twenty thousand dollars to add to the budget, uh take it, take what those numbers are and base the new budget off of off of those those numbers, so that it's has a, you know, a little bit more of an accuracy to it, so. Uh I guess what I'm saying is, before we can sort of go down the line, throwing things around, maybe we should look back at the actuals from twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, what twenty nineteen is, and make our twenty twenty base off of all of those.
Okay, but again, what is it that you wanna look at? What we actually spent on winter control?
Over those years versus what we're budgeting this year.
Okay, now, to this, to the treasurer.
And and I mean the actuals, not whether.
Yeah, I understand, to the treasurer, do you have twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen actual expenditures of winter control?
I certainly do have them, um and uh just as a point of clarification, uh in order to um respond to Deputy Mayor, in our, in our deliberations for budget, um the department managers provide me with their budget, each individual budget, and it's reviewed by myself and the CAO. Uh this is a, this is consistent process uh with the previous CAO and the current CAO. Uh each line item is looked at with a five-year average, um the particular winter control, and I have to apologize to the road superintendent, because he had provided me with a number, and after looking at a five-year average, I increased that number, and he was made up, totally made unaware of that at that point in time, but I felt that we needed to increase uh the the one uh one line item, which was salt, uh salt was uh was originally at a hundred and fifty, and I increased that based on a five-year average. Um that's consistent with a lot of of most of the um budgets we go through, I go through it line by line, and and if I see a number, uh and I'm I'm made aware of what was put into the prior year's budget, so if there's a an anomaly, and let's say in a specific area like building repairs or equipment repairs, in the twenty nineteen budget, uh let's say Mr. Spencer added uh five thousand dollars in uh building repairs at the Cardinal Arena for a specific item. We had conversation about that, and we remove that if we don't have that same reoccurring, so we take out of those anomalies out of the equation, looking over a five-year average to determine whether the number we've got in our twenty twenty budget is representative better of of a of an overall as opposed to just taking last year's and adding a percent to it, that's not how I do budget.
So you do consult the five-year average?
I consult the five-year average, um I I maybe the boys can, the men can uh attest to that, but we do have great conversation about how that budget is developed. Um and uh the salary budget is, of course, I I'm the driver of that in terms of I put in the spreadsheet all of the different rates, adding the percentages based on CPI or union and doing all those calculations, so none of the department managers have access to that specific aspect. But all those hydro, we look at hydro, what's the trending in hydro, we look at heat, what's the trending in heat? Uh equipment repairs, did you add something last year that you aren't doing this year? We, you know, we make those adjustments. And to be totally fair and honest, I mean, um our current operating budget is just sitting at one percent over last year's budget. And so we're, we're not even taking one percent over last year's actual, which we were over budget on, right? So I think, and I and I can certainly provide counsel with all of those actuals if you if you require those, um it's not gonna be an easy task, because I can't, you know, press a button out of the munisoft, it's an Excel spreadsheet exercise that I would have to develop it. I'm I'm more than willing to share that, uh if that's the direction of counsel.
Okay, but to summarize, um and I don't know what sheet it was on, and I know you wanna follow up, but I just wanna get the end of her of. On on page twenty four of twenty five, where winter control is proposed at two eighty four. Are you saying that that is your best judgment based on your five-year picture?
Correct, it's basing let labor increase as well as a as a salt and sand materials increase on a five-year average.
And 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 really, uh so if I look at your twenty nineteen budget amount, and and, you know, I'm I'm not saying that your twenty nineteen budget amount was what you had originally done, not. The two sixty three that shows may not be what you recommended, but you originally developed that two nineteen budget on the basis of your uh analysis of a five-year average.
Yes, that's typically how I developed it.
Because I do remember that there was warnings given to council about that number, and I respect that. Okay, so uh your two eighty four is your best guess using your five-year average. Now, that that does not address uh the issue that's on the table, it's the, because the issue that's on the table is um what are, knowing that we're balanced at the present time, uh where do we go from here is the question on the table. And so I've got one person telling me, add twenty thousand to winter controll, uh to that reserve account, uh which was uh three five two one. I've got, I've got two people telling me, add twenty thousand to that reserve, winter control earmark reserve, three five two one. Now, I got one person telling me, add forty thousand uh for waterfront docks, I've only heard from three out of seven.
Waterfront dock?
Well, waterfront program. Okay, so I I need to hear from two more people, and I'm going this way, so you're up next, and then Counsel, well, Counselor Hunter is first.
Okay, I'll go back to the, I'll go back to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen discussion uh after, uh I'll continue along the line that we're going along, so. Um uh I I mentioned in the last budget meeting that I was disappointed that there wasn't a capital ask um for the riverfront project. Um I was assured that there'd be, you know, um applications through whatever funding streams a- available. Um I think we we really missed, you know, out on a, on a great funding chance last year to um stay out of Prescott's way for their application for the arena. And uh and I think that, you know, by not moving forward with with that riverfront project, uh to a greater degree this year, it'd be wrong, so. I I I definitely would support the forty thousand ask for the for the riverfront.
And Counselor Hunter, you're twenty into the reserve?
Either either twenty more into the reserve or twenty more into operations, whichever way you wanna go, we're gonna get more money in that winter works program, so.
Mr. Bradley, where are you?
Uh well, I had, I expressed those concerns earlier, uh that the reserve side of the winter works program, maybe is far too old, has to be cranked up somehow.
Okay.
And uh and that that's it, I mean.
Okay, so I've.
I don't wanna talk about riverfront projects until we get what we're dealing with here sorted out. That's a new project, okay, that uh has been, a little bit of work has been done on it, and uh, you know, it needs to come for a full discussion, I think. Maybe add uh heating up, or maybe at a sort of towards the end of the budget process, because we can always go back. I think we can kind of look at the operating side here, at least get our foot in the water, because there may be puts and takes that we can make in that operations side to allow us to uh feel more comfortable with some of the items like winter control and so on.
Okay, so are you talking about page fourteen of twenty five?
Twenty four of twenty five, well, the the section dealing with the the operations, which is five E.
Uh twenty four of twenty five.
Twenty one of twenty five, which starts with the operating budget.
All right, well, in this case, so.
I just think, in general, the winter uh control should go up, how much uh is still up in here?
Okay, so here's the way I'm reading the table. I know I don't have complete agreement, but I think I have consensus, majority consensus, that there should be a minimum of twenty thousand additional raise to go into winter control reserve three five two one. Now, I'm looking for a nodding of heads, I know I'm not gonna get full agreement, but I'm, okay, all right, so I'm gonna say that I have majority consensus to raise twenty thousand additional dollars. Winter control three five two one, all right, now, I have as well, Mr. Bradley saying, and I have Counselor Hunter saying to, I think I'm hearing it directly, go back to page twenty one of twenty five, where we should start.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair, I I do apologize, just for for clarity, so that would be forty thousand into that winter control reserve.
Yes, that is correct, the twenty plus the twenty.
Plus the twenty, yeah.
That's just coincidence, like one fifty plus one fifty.
Like one fifty plus one fifty, exactly.
All right, so now, I'm on page uh twenty two, I guess, of twenty five. Now, is is it your intention, Mr. Bradley, that that we look at all of these accounts?
Well.
Or are you interested in looking at sort of the global picture?
Well, we have, if if you look at the first sheet, twenty one and twenty five, it tells us that the total.
Now, let me find you.
Twenty one, that's twenty five.
Give me a sec, well, when I look at twenty one of twenty five, uh that's, that's this twenty twenty operating budget sheet, okay, so go ahead.
And following it is the detail, of course, but it, it tells us that the increase is one forty five, seven hundred. And that because of decreases uh in two items, that uh the increase over the previous year will turn out to be seventy three thousand, three hundred and forty five. So again, we've, I think we need to take a quick look at least, and we can do that probably, and still come back and deal with some of these other problems. Uh, you know, run down the. Uh, you know, run down the line items and just see where we think, um, you know, there's questions to be raised or comments to be offered.
Starting on page twenty-two of twenty-five?
Yeah.
And re- recognizing that the total increase over twenty nineteen is seventy-three thousand. In other words, inform ourselves, inform ourselves as to where that, where, where the biggest impact against that seventy-three came from.
Yeah.
And, uh, so could we get the treasurer to lead us down that path?
Yeah, um, if we can go back to the, to the information item, uh, the items that I've, um, outlined in that information items are, are things that are pretty much out of the control of the township in a sense, um, so for instance, uh, well, some of it is certainly discretionary in terms of, of, of what we've got in terms of winter control. I did add the additional twenty thousand for winter control, but things like the CPI index, council has, uh, provided, you know, have, has already agreed and approved that in- index. So there's twenty-three thousand dollars. That's for all, all council firefighter honorarium and non-union salary. The QP contract, which we are bound by, is an increase of one point seven five. That impacts the wages for our non-uni- for our union members of twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, there, if you can recall, there was an action item previously brought to front of c- council with, uh, respect to increases in the summer students returning wage. And at that particular in- information item, we, we had indicated that there would be an eighty-nine hundred dollar increase to the budget. Uh, we have in, are anticipating a fifteen percent increase in our liability insurance. That is not something that's negotiable, there's thirty-two thousand. Uh, we have added, uh, five thousand dollars for electronic devices for council. Uh, or as I said before, I inter- increased the winter control based on a five-year average of twenty thousand dollars, and, uh, council indicates that they, that even that seems to be a little low. Uh, the increase in the policing costs, again, something we cannot negotiate, is twenty-three thousand. The increase in the South Nation authority is seventy-four hundred. So all those increases that I'm flagging here are things that, um, you know, are, are pretty much something we have to live with. Um, so the only things that we were able to, we were fortunate in getting a decrease in our great, great, uh, group benefits. And, uh, in administration, we had an eighty thousand dollar, uh, assessment, uh, for asset management, uh, line item in twenty nineteen, and I have reduced that line item to twenty thousand based on what the actual cost we feel we need. So that's why we're down to that seventy-three. Um, I have a, I've atta- attached the, uh, detail, and we can certainly go through each department. Um, but, you know, there's negatives some places and positives in some departments, um, so.
Okay, but I guess, uh, one thing that this analysis doesn't address itself to is, and, and, and I know they're all comparisons, but what it doesn't address itself to is, are we doing things in the most efficient and effective manner? You know, effectiveness and efficiency. And I don't know how we get to the bottom of that, because all we really have to do, all we really have is numbers to look at. But when I look at things like, and I'm going to pick an example, when I look at things like, I see on page twenty-four of twenty-five, and I look at things like vehicle expenses, and I see that we've got a new, a twenty nineteen actual of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, when we had budgeted two hundred and fifty-eight, and I'm heavily influenced by your use of five-year averages. And I say to myself, well, based on our five-year averages, we were looking at two fifty-eight budgeted in twenty nineteen, and actually spent, what is the difference there, eighty grand more? And I'm saying to myself, like, what has happened to our vehicle expenses? Now, I know that we're constantly being told it's old equipment, and it's starting to fail us, and it has to be repaired, and I'm saying, why? What is happening here? So I'm just opening the discussion that Mr. Bradley has started. Anybody else want to jump in here?
Oh, I think you did a good job of going, going over the operating expense. The main reason I wanted to look at it, at it is, it was the winter works, because I didn't, I really don't think, uh, with the difference in the weather patterns and stuff we're, we're having, our, our five-year averages aren't playing out for us. We're getting too many anomalies, if you want to call them, uh, but we're, and it looks like this year is not changing much, because we're, whether it's good luck or bad luck, or whatever you want to call it, we're, we're ending up with snowstorms on the weekends all the time. It's costing us twice as much to handle them as what we didn't. Years ago, we didn't do that much plowing on the weekend. If the roads get really bad, the guys were called in and plowed. Now we got a standard, we got a meet, and the guys have to come in, we're gardeners. Plus we got time restraints on how long they can plow and when they can come in. Where before we maybe stay late on Friday night and, and, and plow, plow, now they got a book off and come back in on a Saturday, come back in on a Sunday, that they end up in time and a half or double time coming in. And, uh, my only concern is with some of them, that we went so far over last year, our five-year average is going to work on some of them, like our, our mayor says, our vehicle maintenance. We know we went out of line because we had too much repairs. Are we confident with that five-year average, average that we're going to stay within our one percent here? Are we going to have enough of our old equipment replaced now that we're not going to run into gigantic over, overrun on them? I think the staff did an excellent job of getting it down to it, as long as the averages work. I'm just worried on, on vehicle maintenance, winter works, uh, roadside maintenance. If, if these measures are going to work, some of our pavement roads, I think we need to be spending more money on the shoulders of them and stuff, so we don't, heavy equip, tractors and stuff are wider, they're running on the shoulders of, edges of the pavement all the time, breaking them off. If we don't spend the money to keep those shoulders built up and packed, but the wide tires or the spreaders and stuff that are running over, they're not breaking the edge of those pavements. Uh, so I, 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 I guess we're worried on some of these averages, whether they're going to work or not, so.
Mr. Mayor, that's kind of the same kind of, similar type of concern. If I look at the seventy-three thousand, and I say, well, that's, that's really good, you know, and we can keep it to that level, that's great. But once you get into the detail, you find that there's huge swings between the, the budget of nineteen and the actual of nineteen. And, and then the budget for twenty is kind of increased over nineteen budget a little bit. So I think there's vulnerabilities in here that are, like, I don't, I don't know how you get, like, in, just like, pick a number like, uh.
Give me a rough page reference.
Twenty-four, twenty-four of twenty-five.
Yes.
Uh, you know, pick, pick a number like, um, where are we at? Public Works overhead expenses, five seventy-eight, three ninety. We ended up spending six thirty-two, seven thirty-four, but we're only going to budget five fifty. So this is like, makes it, you can jump to the conclusion that the seventy-three thousand is not, is too low. But on the other hand, you ask yourself, well, are, are these, uh, in two thousand and twenty, are these high numbers relative to twenty budget going to continue, you know? Uh, winter control, two six, well, we've heard a story about it, but two sixty-three, three sixty-six. But, you know, you're at the mercy of the elements here, so, and then, and we're, we've got two eighty-four in there, which, I know the averaging system and all that stuff usually works, but there's un- unanswerable issues that come in here. And so I'm worried that we're, we're going to strike a budget, two, a twenty-twenty budget, uh, in operations, that's going to get blown out of the water when we're sitting here next year uh, because of overruns.
Okay, I see your point. Uh, I don't know how to address your point, I'm, I'm going to come back to you in a few minutes, I'm sure.
It may be control mechanisms, I don't know, like, we've got numbers, that's all we got. We don't get into the detail of it. I don't think it's, shouldn't be our role either. But we had that service review, that, loved that, uh, you know, the operation on kind of a time, time in motion type thing. And, um, so maybe there's room, I don't know, there's.
But, but you may very well be right. It, it may be that, that this budget needs additional closer governance throughout the year.
Could be.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor.
I think, uh, and, and I may be wrong on, on Mr. Bradley, but I think from what I was asking Melanie for before was more clarification on the way that, that we did budget, because it, my interpretation was we were, you know, basing this year's budget off last year's budget. And it was such a relief, uh, and I know you've said it before, and I know I've heard it before, but it's still my own ignorance to it, that you used the same process that I had provided the pictures for earlier in the week, and I was so excited thinking, hey, great, you know, we found a way to find a little bit of uh, wiggle room, and it's very comforting knowing that you already do that, and, and I'm thankful for that. And I think that's, that's very reassuring to me. I think though, maybe a little bit of the confusion that, that I'm hearing from Mr. Bradley is that he doesn't have twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, and twenty sixteen to show him the trend that he speaks of. And I think if he sees that there's less fluctuation in those numbers, and that they do have that little graph increase, and they're reflective of, of that increase, then it would, it would give more understanding for that new number that comes up in the twenty-twenty. And I think that that's what, what makes sense for me. Um, and, and I may be wrong, and that's maybe a little bit of justification for my ask, uh, for those, you know, for that document, for that clarity, uh, but I think it would certainly help with, with what we're talking about now.
Can I respond, Mr. Mayor? I, I don't really want to see the seventeen, sixteen, fifteen trend. These are professional people. We rely on them, and we have our faith in them to, to look after that kind of thing. What I want is, I wanted to know at our budget review every two or three months, where we're trending with respect to the budget, and are we anticipating overruns at that time? Because if we don't take, we're taking actions out on a deficit of two hundred, well, we solved it, but a deficit of two hundred thousand in the two, the two thousand and nineteen budget. You know, so I guess what, I don't want to get it down into weeds of what their, their jobs are here, but I, I do want information that's relevant to say, well, we've got to put the brakes on here and do something, or shift money around, or whatever.
I know, but at the same time, I don't think you can suck and blow it to say that I. Uh, it seems to me that, you know, it seems to me that if, if the weakness is in the governance, if, if we're not being diligent enough on a monthly basis at our public works meetings or at our mid-finance meetings, uh, to watch how we're trending, to ask the questions that we're obligated by mean, by, by virtue of our office to ask, if we're not doing those kinds of things, uh, trends can, can, trends can slip by us. Uh, but you've got to admit that the staff did flag for us that we were having trouble with vehicle maintenance.
Yeah.
And they did flag for us that winter control was pretty much blown out of the water by the end of April. Now, we did ask that, can you handle this within the existing budget? And I felt we had reassurances that it could be. Uh, it turns out that that wasn't the case, but maybe we, maybe we can't expect the impossible either. So I, I mean, uh, I don't know where you want to go with tonight's meeting, um, other than where we are at the present time. Um, and where are we at the present time? We're at one point nine seven balanced without the twenty thousand that the consensus of the table is, needs to be raised to put back into winter control. That's where we are. So where does, the, the chair's looking for a direction at seven o'clock, and he's hungry, and he hasn't had anything to eat all day. Well, some minor exceptions, not including the nine more bars. Um, so the chair's looking for a direction as to where to take this meeting. Um, I'd like to have some comment around the table as to where the meeting is going from here. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'd like to, I know we went to the operating budget, but I don't want to leave the capital budget behind either and close up. I, I have, I have a hard time on a few of these things that are, that are still out there. Um, I don't know if we should address capital tonight, or if you want to go home and eat.
I'm at your pleasure.
No, but, you know, um, I ha- I have a hard plot. Every time I look at the twenty thousand for Station Two additional study, twenty thousand dollars, but yet we got drawings of fifteen thousand dollars in Station Two. So why is the twenty thousand there? That's some of, what are we doing with that?
All right, Councilor, hang on one second.
I just.
Because if you're taking us back to the capital budget.
I am, well, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out, I mean.
Well, I need to get the page reference in front of me.
Page six of twenty-five.
Okay, so I got to get back to page six of twenty-five. Everybody will get page six of twenty-five in front of them.
And it's, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, it's, uh, Station Two additional studies. I mean.
And it's got twenty thousand in it.
Yeah, and we already have fifteen thousand's in drawings and studies. Why are we doing another twenty? Like, where's, what are we doing with twenty thousand for studies?
Okay, so to the CIO, like, where do you want to go from here?
Uh, well, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head. I, I'm not sure if the fire chief does.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe it was discussed at, uh, one of the previous budget meetings.
Yes, we did.
Take it right back from the start. We, we identified deficiencies in Station Two. We did the need study within Eastern Engineering in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Um, they made some recommendations. Um, the next step, which was the fifteen thousand, that was earmarked to, uh, to, to do some drawings for some possible upgrades, that did not get spent in twenty nineteen based on, I believe, with the new council coming in, and then the excellent council. No matter, that, that money is now spent, the drawings are being done, so that the fifteen thousand is spent. So the twenty thousand is for further engineering, depending on if they decide a new build, we're going to need geotechnical, we're going to need the environmental surveys. If we're going to renovate the building, we're going to be spending lots of money on engineering. So it's basically twenty thousand for the next steps based on what we get back from the architect.
And if I, if I recall correctly, the, the purpose of that twenty thousand was to provide us with options, if I recall correctly, uh, an option on rebuild and an option on new build.
The fifteen thou, the fifteen thousand that was a carryover, that will provide the options. The twenty thousand will be to pursue what option?
Oh, I see, okay, all right, okay.
So the fifteen thousand we have renovations, new fireplace, or new fireplace, new fire hall.
Correct.
The twenty thousand is to do our studies.
Based on?
If we're based on what we do.
Correct.
Are we going to go ahead in twenty, okay, here's a question. Are we going to go ahead in twenty twenty and do these studies? Can it wait until twenty twenty-one?
That, that would be a decision of council, we've been at it since twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen.
Okay, but to, just to go back around the table, I think that we had put that to bed with the ca, with the decision at the table, had we not?
A couple of meetings ago, it seems to me we talked about that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it, it survived that initial round. So I mean, I think that that was a decision of the table, that that twenty would stay in there.
From my, my perspective, I think we have to move forward. That station needs to be, you know, we need to rationalize that and that.
I don't, I, I'm going. You want it in there?
Well, I, I thought, at least my understanding was that the first meeting was the first meeting in that, in that we were doing.
the first meeting was the first meeting, and that, and that we were doing the best we could off of the first meeting, but we would revisit the same discussion again and take it further if need be. That, that's my understanding of the, the way the process was going. Not if it survived the first meeting, it survived. My, my take on that was, you know, this is the first round, we'll come back to it, we'll do it. But what can we get rid of in the first meeting?
Okay, and we did that.
Right.
And we're back in again tonight.
Right, but we just said that, that what Councilor Dillabaw had asked for was off the table, because it survived previous meetings.
I didn't say it was off the table, I said it was, it went through the first round and survived the first round. If we're having a second round, then it's up to people to speak up.
I think the point that Councilor Dillabaw raises, maybe we defer doing work on it. So, I guess if you want to revisit the discussion, like, do we see it as a higher, high, high enough priority to keep the twenty thousand in there this year?
If we plan to use it for twenty twenty, fine, but, you know, we have the fifteen thousand study of, of the renovation and of a new one. But we haven't seen them, and here we are in February.
Well, I don't know what the schedule is. I presume the, the fire department, the chief has some idea of what his schedule's going to be.
Well, hang on one second. I have a, a report on my desk at home of the review of the Station Two, right? Don't I have that report from Eastern? Yes, I have the report from Eastern Engineering. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, we have that study. No, I'm talking about the fifteen thousand is... Yeah, we've got that study. But it's, the fifteen is, we, you, we already have renovations, I think, completed now, and the new ones. We have the option of the new fire hall or going renovations, is that right?
That is what fifteen thousand is going to get us.
Right.
Hopefully, in quarter one this year.
But that's not done yet.
Oh, I see.
The fifteen, okay, so, so it's not, we haven't got the actual drawing of the renovations.
The fifteen thousand's whipped, it was whipped from last year, right?
Correct.
The fifteen, yes, working progress.
So, it's in process.
Yeah, and it's still not done, that's right.
And we don't know what the schedule the fire chief has in terms of what he's going to get and when he's going to get it. I mean, if he wants to let us know, we'll...
Okay, so, so Counselor Dillabaw is right. I mean, there's, there's fifteen that was whipped forward, plus twenty for potential, possible future action during the year. And I think kind of the issue that Counselor Dillabaw is, is raising is, well, do we need to put that in if it's only a possibility that we're going to use it? Or, or what is the possibility that we're going to use it?
In twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty. I think that's the question that's being raised. And I'm hearing the assurances of the chief, that the intention is to keep moving on this. I mean, a lot of groundwork has been done. We don't know where it's going, but...
So, is that your intentions, Chief Moore, is to get this rolling for twenty twenty?
The, the estimated, I should get something from the architect. He, he estimated by the end of Q1 this year. Once that comes to council, you decide the, the direction you're going to go, then, once that decision's made, we will have twenty dollars to get started.
So, the process has been very methodical up to this point in time.
Yeah.
I haven't got a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, now, so Counselor Dillabaw has brought us back to page six of five. And, six of twenty-five.
Yeah.
So, we're back looking at the capital budget again. Does anyone else have any other issues to bring forward from that?
Might, might I suggest that we do have a, a, a closed session as well, that may have some impacts with respect to the operating? That we, we, we do that, see where we end up with, with those, put that package all together, and come forward at the next budget meeting? And then determine whether you want to do anything more with the, with, with the capital?
Oh, okay.
It's, it's just a suggestion. But I think that there's so...
You're drawing my attention back to the agenda, that we do, that we have a closed session here.
As long as we come back to the capital, because I have some things.
Okay, so, next.
We can do that the next meeting.
Absolutely, yeah. Before we, before we leave, in the end of the closed session, Counselor Dillabaw brought up the forty thousand he's looking for for the waterfront. And I don't think we should leave that. I mean, we should either put it on for the next meeting, or, or whatever.
Well, I would like a, a discussion on that, if, if, if we could. Oh, absolutely.
Definitely, we'd have some information.
If you want, or discuss, yeah, we're, we're pressing for time. As long as it's brought forward for our next budget meeting, and maybe we can get it on the agenda, yes.
And there will be some more information regarding that.
Yes.
Like, I'd like to see an information sheet or something, like, you know, we'll get a regular deal.
But we will be coming back to the budget, or the capital too, right?
We've never finished with it.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm very reluctant to put new issues on the capital. And I'll tell you that, I mean, my, my own personal feeling is that if you look at this capital sheet that we have in front of us right now.
Right.
It's a very ambitious program, to say the least. I know we've just taken a major component out of it, but it is, it is ambitious. And in addition to what we see here, there are a number of other factors that are coming up. I'm not going to get into them now, but suffice it to remind, for me to take this opportunity to remind the committee that we have submitted our application under ICIP, the Green Stream, for the two million or so that is, has been earmarked as our number one high priority capital item for twenty twenty. And that's the replacement of the sewer and waterworks along County Road Two. And that is going to be a, a big project that's going to fall, basically, on the shoulders of those seven or eight hundred users. And, and even though the majority of the impact financially falls on the shoulders of those seven or eight hundred users, the administration and the work of putting that into effect, the actionability of it is going to fall to staff. So, there's two sides to that point. But anyway, we'll deal with that discussion on another day. So, I'm about to wind up this discussion and move to the closed session. Counselor Hunter?
I did like to bring up one thing that I, um, here, we're talking about adding money for the park and stuff, and we don't want to add extra cash to our capital. Here, I brought up at the last capital meeting, there, we're looking for a replacement truck, and we've got it in the taxation budget here for the recreation. And I mentioned at the time, we've got a truck, I think it's two years old, that the port, that our port manager used. And I think we should discuss that at our next port meeting, availability of maybe buying a new truck for the port, and bringing that two-year-old truck over to recreation, and saving that thirty-five thousand.
And I know you...
And a new truck out of recreation.
Okay, and I, I know you brought that up, and I have met with the port general manager on the concept, and I think the concept, or the idea of bringing that up at the next port general man, meeting, and seeing what recommendation comes from that committee would be a useful thing. But I, I can tell you that on the basis of, of my early discussions with the port general manager, it would not be his recommendation. Although we do, as you know, have the ability, as the governing body, to overrule the recommendation, but that is the proper place for it to be discussed, yes. Okay, so, I'm about to move on here to the closed session.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, do we, we have five F?
We have five F, which is setting the date of the next budget meeting. And this will be budget meeting number four. Give the staff an opportunity to recap. And I'm looking for a date for budget meeting number four. Does anyone have some suggestions? And we should allow at least a week between the two meetings to give the staff an opportunity. And so, I'm looking at my calendar, and I'm looking at a date like February the twentieth.
Can we make that at six P M., Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a police board meeting in, in Brockville that night, at eight o'clock, starting eight o'clock.
Is it a police board meeting?
I believe it is. I have it in here.
I know there's one at nine o'clock in Kemphill.
Yeah.
And then, and then there's the, the one in Brockville at eight P M.
That's what I understand.
Okay, all right, so...
That's on the twentieth.
Yeah, so the twentieth is out, the nineteenth is out because of the board meeting?
You sure that's not through the day, Mr. Hunter? Or Mr. Allen?
It is through the day, yes, from eight A M. until nine, oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's, I'm sorry.
It's eight A M., not eight P M.
So sorry.
Yeah.
So sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Allen.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so then the twentieth is available?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, could you make it at six P M. now, please? If we could? Or do we, five's fine. You may want to notice, do you want to continue? Five, six is a little easier.
I can do six, I'm, 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 I'm certain of six.
Okay, so six P M. on Thursday the twentieth, budget meeting number four. Is that agreeable with everybody? Okay, that gets us to the next budget meeting. We going to do two?
We did, not last time.
Yeah, the last time we missed. So, if we do two, the next one would be, I need a suggestion. What about the twenty-seventh, one week later?
That give staff enough time?
Staff's got a week. Not enough time?
Throw up my fortune.
I know what your answer is.
She doesn't care.
Is that okay? Oh, you don't care?
I'm, I'm optimistic that budget meeting four...
We'll wrap it up. Okay, but we're going to put, we're going to put in the twenty-seventh at six P M., if necessary, for budget meeting number five. Budget meeting number five. Okay, all right. So, that deals with five F on our agenda. And now, we're in item number six, which is the question period, if there's any questions?
Six P M., Mr. Mayor, again?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so now, seven o'clock, item number seven on the agenda is closed session. Does someone have the motion to go into the closed session? And by the way, this meeting started at five. I haven't smelled any sandwiches yet.
We, we had no direction, Mr. Mayor, to order a sandwich.
Does the staff need direction to feed the poor elected people that's standing here all day?
I shall, seconded by Deputy Mayor DeChambeau. Committee of the whole proceed into closed session, seven twenty-three P M. In order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters of veteran identified individuals, including the missus or local port employees, particularly staff levels, administration, facilities, and minutes of closed session dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Please look to report out of the closed session. So, the committee, the, the closed session, committee met with management and discussed a number of staffing issues, and I'm going to say, discussed two specific staffing issues. The committee provided definitive direction for the action and implementation on one of the issues, and left the other issues in abeyance for a future discussion. Now, the other thing reporting out is the committee reviewed the minutes of the in-camera session held on January the thirteenth, and Counselor Cameron will bring forward a motion.
Yes, thank you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Hunter that the committee of the whole approves the minutes of closed session dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Those in favor? Motion is carried. Chair's looking for the motion to adjourn.
Moved by myself, seconded by he, Mr. Cameron. The committee of the whole does adjourn at eight twenty-six P M. Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion to adjourn? Motion is carried.